And yeah, he is really cool. Keeps it really cool.
Yeah, okay.
Fill it with ice.
Ready? Dr. Ror, the regular meeting of independent school district six ninety-five, Chisum, Minnesota. Please, can you roll call, please?
Director Ramasatur, here.
Director Rice, here.
Director Karim Simon, here.
Director Lapi, here.
Director Raha, here.
Here. Here, thank you. Anybody from the audience? A public comment? Seeing none, we've got recognition of guests and visitors. That would be you, Rochelle, Injensa. Are you guys ready?
Is that where you want to show business? Jordan and Luke.
Well, we can, or we can wait.
Oh, they're not on yet.
They're not, okay, we'll wait then.
Yeah. They're somewhere.
Yeah, I think they're ready.
Oh, are they?
We are on there.
Yep, do you need that?
I was going to share the screen, but it would mimic the handout as well. So I could watch it on my end. Up to you guys.
Can you get that off there?
Er, is Luke ready or?
They're right there, yep.
Oh, they're behind you.
Yep.
Okay, we have Luke and Jordan and Rochelle from Injensa. We had some outstanding or bids or rebids that we had to go over for. And they're going to give us a little report on that. So whenever you're ready, Luke and Jordan.
I believe I'm sharing our screen. Can you guys see it okay?
Yep.
Awesome. It should match your handout as well. Good evening, board update. This is a rebid bid recommendation. April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three. Quick agenda, what we'll cover tonight. Bid tabulation, bid analysis, budget and recommendation. Just want to kind of lead this with a precursor that we've been through the bulk of this, the meat and potatoes. These are just for the remaining scopes that we didn't have bids for or that we rejected bids on. So we just had three work scopes that we were looking at for tonight. So it should be relatively quick. So bid tabulation, total bids, we received five. Again, we had three work packages out for rebid. Workshop number seven, metal wall panel, we did get one bid there. That was the same apparent low as last time with the corrected spec. So not too surprised about that. Feel good to see them show back up again with a reasonable number. Work scope eleven, acoustical ceiling tiles, they had withdrawn their bid for missing the wood ceilings. They did rebid again, they were the only bidder again, and they do have that all included in. They are squared away and ready to go. And then on fire protection, we did not receive any bids. I put a lot of calls out, I spent a lot of time talking to contractors. Kind of the synopsis that I realized is that most of them didn't think they were going to be competitive in this area and thought that maybe some of the other more local contractors would bid it. Nonetheless, we got three bids and we shoot for, you know, around three on average is where we want to be. So we got three numbers, we got three good numbers. No real concern with the turnout considering what we had the first time in the second go around. The fire protection was the big one and we got three numbers, so very happy. And then I did send out the bid tabulation as well as far as where those numbers all laid out. So you should have that in front of you as well, and I can pull it up to share if we have any questions on that.
Any questions? Okay.
So bid analysis, the sum of those three bids that we would be looking to take action on, one million, three hundred thirty-seven thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars. These bid packages, as far as the alternates go, the pricing that these guys had did not affect any of the alternates, so there's no change for those alternates. Those alternates are still full steam ahead. It's just saying there was no acoustical ceiling involved or fire suppression or anything. So all those alternates are fully funded, fully approved already, and we won't need to do anything additional with these contractors for that. So last we had talked about, you know, we had an estimate as far as where these numbers were. That was kind of the number we're working at. I had said, you know, these numbers aren't exact, but that's about where we expect them to be. These numbers are now exact and they're within the range that we were talking last time. So the total project sum, base bids and alternates, you know, all real hard numbers now that we have these actually in hand, twenty-seven million, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred and eight dollars. So with that, we finalized the building addition and renovation costs in the budget. So I did move to that next slide. Essentially what it means, you know, this was kind of a formality because we knew that we had to get these three bid out and then get them awarded to move on. As long as we got bids, we did. So our final number ends up being for the building addition renovation project, twenty-seven million, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, three hundred eight dollars. Nothing on this budget summary has changed since last time. We just have the exact number of where we stand today with three million, seven hundred, seven hundred five thousand, eight hundred eighty-five dollars and fifty-six cents as a project balance. That being said, it doesn't mean that we have a bunch of money left over. It just means that we have money left to address all the needs that we still have yet to partake. But the big portion that we've been working towards is a building addition and renovation. So we've got an opportunity to have it fully funded and move forward, you know, the way that we want to. So that being said, any questions with the budget at this point?
Does this say forty-two? Does this say forty-seven? Did you say forty-seven?
Isn't that?
Twenty-seven, I think. Oh, I think it was.
The total was forty-seven.
I think you're setting this number.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, I wasn't following along.
No worries, no worries.
Any questions by the board to Luke or Jordan or Rochelle? As you can see that there weren't, we did, Luke and Jordan did have some issues trying to get more bids, especially when it came to fire protection. So we appreciate the hard work on that. And what we have right now is what we have. And down under item seven, seven A will present that to the board for approval or changes.
And remind me, was it one of these, is the metal ones or the acoustics that just need to be more specified?
The metal one.
Metal one needed more specifications.
Yep. Yep. Yep, so we corrected the spec on the metal wall panel and then on the acoustics, we made sure that they included everything that they needed to include this route. So, so our recommendation is going to be approving the bid recommendation as presented and issuing contracts to Range Corners and Roofing, Twin City Acoustics and Nova Fire Protection. You should all have a copy of the bid recommendation letter in front of you as well. And then all of these bidders have indicated their bid is whole and complete and intend to execute the contract upon award. So that was the difference in acoustics before, we were not whole and complete. So that being said, in my mind, it's almost a formality at this point. This is what we expected. It's came incorrect and we're happy to be here. So we've got a fully awardable project. So, you know, that being said, any questions or anything else that we can follow up on?
Questions? Okay, Luke and Jordan will we'll get down to you guys in just a few minutes here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under reports, Ms. Winter.
Good evening. Just to update you, our, we're looking at schedules right now and I know one of the big wishes was that we would get PE for five days a week, at least four or five days a week, and we're able to do that this coming year. So our Vaughn will be five times a week for twenty-five minutes and then the CE will be four times a week for twenty-five minutes. So they'll be able to get active for that part, so that's good. I think that'll be important. Band coming up, our band director over at the high school is going to be meeting with our fourth grade students and this spring already and having them look at instruments and decide whether or not they want to do band or music. So that'll be coming up and then they'll have a parent's informational night and just so that they can try out instruments and that. Our MCA is, we finish up math and reading, we're taking a break this week and science will start next week. So that'll be good to have a little break for that. But then we'll do fast bridge testing probably mid-May to look at more of a growth piece to where we started in the fall and now in the springtime. We do have a family engagement coming up with our check and connect families that we have about thirty families and our check and connect person from the Vaughn and the elementary are going to be, we're doing some disc golf. I know our person's really into disc golf and so she's going to have those families come into the gym here on Tuesday. And so that'll be a parent engagement coming up. And then our Title I families are also going to do a donut day, so we'll have that at the Vaughn and the elementary. We have our sixth grade that'll be starting to do tours at the high school, so they're going to be excited for that. And then we have field days that are coming up at both of the buildings as well. So again, it's all those fun springtime things and field trips and I'm just seeing, yeah, looking forward to.
Do you have dates for field day?
We do, we do. I can get those too.
Oh, yeah, just send them.
Yep, I will send them and yeah, the more we, yeah, I have help, that would be great, so. I know the field day for the elementary we'll have at the football field and more parents are invited just because the location and that is easier to sit in the stands and watch. And our field day at the Vaughn is a little bit more low-key right on and it's just for a couple hours. But field day here is all day long, so, yeah, they really enjoy that. Any questions for?
My, like, that you did field day at the Vaughn, I don't know if you used to have it then. We always had it in the fourth or sixth, now it's not happening at the Vaughn.
Yeah, no, the kids really enjoy it. Like I said, it's low, it's lower key, it's for a couple hours, but we rotate stations and then do popsicles and all of that. They had a blast last year, so weather, hopefully weather provides.
I still remember meeting Julie Malacher in the fifty-yard dash. Yeah, it was a hundred years ago.
Yeah, they enjoy it for sure.
Ms. Winter, what is currently the length of PE time?
Right now it's forty minutes, two times a week.
And I'm just assuming that the other teachers are excited about this a little bit?
Yes, absolutely, yeah. Our kids need to be active, get moving and, yeah, yep.
I think so, too.
Yeah, no, it'll be.
It helps their attention.
Yeah, no, it'll be good. They need to get active and I think too, we're going to need it just, I think, with the lunch situation to next year here with construction, we're going to need to be looking at and being creative depending on how much the fencing goes up to the building and so looking for creative ways to do that too.
Okay.
Any other questions from Ms. Winter?
I spoke with Jermaine today.
Oh, yeah, the SMART program.
She's so very excited about the SMART program, yeah.
Yeah, I think kids have been, I saw the kids rolling and rolling all their cross, you know, body.
Yeah, she has been better volunteering and so that's.
It's exciting, yep, the kids are, yep, really enjoying that and it, and there's, again, like I said, there's a SMART training and I know some of our teachers are already signed up for that so that they, so they can move it into their classrooms too.
They used to do SMART here, they used to have it at one time. Remind me what that, that acronym is or what it's for again?
It's, again, it's about just the brain getting students in brain activity, moving movement and like I said, cross lateral, so they're doing a lot of cross body and doing figure eight. It's just because our kids are not getting those gross motor skills like they have in the past and so just even crawling, you know, trying to do, yeah, those, those pieces.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Very good, thanks, yep.
I know Mr. Fredin is not here, but I'll just give a brief update. We had, we are having some leaking over in the gym, over the main gym over there and it's apparently occurring. And I don't know the technical terms, right on the crease of the two gables. So it was getting behind the plaster and some of the plaster started coming away and so if they, he's got somebody on that already, so.
It happened before?
I think there was water, something, I'd have to fix the wall. Tough pointing and all of that was so bad at one time.
Right, right.
In the auditorium, I know they had a big issue with that one wall.
Yeah, on the, on the west wall, we've had some issues with condensation and water off the heating. That's been coming down the wall too, so. Currently, yeah. Maybe it's another sign that we need a pool, I don't know. That's all Mr. Fredin advised.
I have a water ticket. Why aren't you there with buckets collecting?
Item five, approving the agenda. I would like to add, you have a sheet in front of you approving the hiring of a business manager. I would like to entertain putting that under item seven D under business. And if I could entertain a motion for that?
So made.
Motion by
Shelly Alphie.
Support by Director Karim Simon. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, approving the consent agenda. These are the minutes of the April eighth, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. Payrolls for the month of March twenty twenty-four in the amount of six hundred and seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. And accounts payable for the month of March twenty twenty-four in the amount of five hundred and five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty-two cents.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Director Ramasatur.
Support.
Support by Director Rice. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item seven, under business, motion to approve the business presented by Injensa and proceed with issuing the contracts. These are the additional bids that Injensa just gives representation on. And these are to Range Corners for the metal wall, Range Corners and Roofing, I should say, for the metal wall, Twin City Acoustics and Nova Fire Protection in the amount of one million, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars. And one million, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
I'll make a motion.
I support.
Motion by Director Karim Simon and support by Director Lapi. Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, approve the resolution increasing the district superintendent's spending authority by up to fifty thousand dollars not to include change orders in the construction project. Mr. Morrison and I had some discussion on this. There was, I believe, on the previous superintendent, I believe there was authority for fifty thousand and then it went back down to five thousand. And we're looking to move that up. And part, part of this is due to the construction project. At times, we may, we may not meet for three weeks or we have that odd week in there. And this would give the superintendent some authority to approve some payments.
Make a motion.
Motion by Director Karim Simon.
I support.
Support by Director Rice. Any discussion?
Is there a reason why it's fifty? I mean, the last superintendent had five.
Well, according to the previous superintendent, he told me that his was fifty.
At five, at each time.
Yeah, and I'm, I can only tell you what the previous superintendent told me. And I think this is partially due to the construction project that's happening. I mean, we can we can move it back down after the construction, after the construction is done. I think this is just to help us move along with with the construction so we don't have to call special meetings and.
And I see it's not to include like change orders, those.
Correct, change orders are still going to come through the board.
So is there a, if the superintendent wants to do something with this, does he bring it to us, say, I want to do this, or does he just do it, no matter what?
He would be able to just do it. However, I think with his due diligence, he will come back to us and advise us that he had to make a payment, whatever payment was due or something like that. And I think this also may help and this is just my opinion, just thinking off the cuff. With a new business manager coming on, this may help that business manager also. It's, that's just me saying that.
And how I kind of envision it too is that if we don't have a meeting coming up, then there needs to be something approved. It could be approved and then he can bring it on the next agenda to see if this came through, this is what
Absolutely.
we have to pay it and approve so that we would be, you know, we would be informed of what's going on. But I could see things coming up that would be time, would be time sensitive and then, you know, you kind of have that gap.
But I don't see this happening a lot or maybe at all.
Well, I would just suggest that if there is something that he needs to use this for, and I'm not against it, he's been pretty good about alerting us before he does this. This is what.
Absolutely.
So I would say the communication between superintendent
Continue the communication.
and, and make sure that he lets us know what it's for in case we have questions.
Yes.
Absolutely.
That makes, that makes sense, yes.
That's fine, okay.
That we don't have to have a, a special meeting, but we have a little bit of a heads up.
Yeah.
Yes. And that's the thing too.
If, if he wants our opinion and we have an opportunity, you give it to him if it's necessary. Okay.
I could, I concur with Director Raha on that.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Lisa, can you roll call, please?
Director Ramasatur?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Karim Simon?
Yes.
Director Lapi?
Yes.
Director Raha?
Yes.
Chair Casey?
Yes. Motion carries. Item C, accounts.
Donations.
Donations. I am seeing move to approve the resolution accepting donations.
So made.
Motion by Director Karim Simon.
Support.
Support by Director Ramasatur. Any discussion? Again, we'd like, we'd like to thank all those who made donations to the school district and we certainly do appreciate it. All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Director Ramasatur?
Yes.
Director Rice?
Yes.
Director Karim Simon?
Yes.
Director Lapi?
Yes.
Director Raha?
Yes.
Chair Casey?
Yes. Motion carries. Item D, motion to approve the hiring of Noah Kazar to job number two sixty-six, business manager effective approximately May twentieth, two thousand twenty-four. Before we start discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Director Karim Simon, support by Director Lapi. Discussion, if you may recognize the name here. Mr. Kazar is the brother of Alex Kazar, business manager over in Hiving. He does have his master's degree in business administration. My knowledge of, and I thought I had something here in front of me, but I've got my mess.
I can help you.
So he does have, do you have it?
One second here, I think I have them. Okay, he has his bachelor's degree in finance, master's degree in business administration, several years' experience managing a commercial loan portfolio for a bank, two more years' experience managing a credit department, experience in leading tradings and trainings and presenting to large and small groups. And his work includes ensuring compliance and financial processes and procedures.
Thank you. My understanding is that we had a number of good applicants and Mr. Kazar rose to the top, so. Any other discussion?
Well, I was excited to see, I was excited to see the, the motion on there. It wasn't, I mean, the interviews were just like a Friday, Wednesday, Friday school or Wednesday?
Yes, Wednesday.
So that's just excellent. So this is the recommendation from the, I don't know, maybe.
That is the recommendation from the hiring committee, correct?
What's the salary?
Salary is at the top end.
What's the salary?
Ninety.
Ninety? We should have had documentation what the salary was before we, you know, it would have been nice.
Yeah.
Although they'll say this much, I agree with salary.
Yeah, and I, and I think Mr. Kazar may not have accepted the position if it was anything less. And talking to the superintendent, he felt the same with the other applicants and the other applicants were also qualified. So I, I think we're getting ourselves the best we can. When, when does it start date again? Approximately May twentieth. He wasn't going to notify his current employer until after
Okay, okay.
evening tonight and.
Well, we'll still have to, it'll, his contract will still be dropped before us too, so.
Right, right. So.
Make a motion or not?
Yep, motion is on the table.
We already did, yeah, yeah, okay.
Any other discussion?
No.
All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Welcome to Mr. Kazar. And if you thought Alex was tall, make do you see now.
He's a big boy.
He's a big boy. Item eight, any discussion by the board? During that, we'll move on to item nine, information. See, there, there's some of the things I know everybody gets from MSBA and Department of Education. Sometimes that, that feels all that's, oh, I'll have Lisa to put it in the package just in case somebody can read it and so from time to time, we'll do that. A couple of other things for information are our duo speech team of Vivian Brandt and Rowan Hendrickson went down to the state last week and they took eighth out of twenty-six. And they're two nine prayers, so.
Wow, that's great, that's awesome.
So congratulations to them and hopefully they continue and continue to speak well.
And there's nothing funnier than going to a speech, you can't even imagine what it's like. It is like unbelievable. There's people everywhere talking to walls, talking to their shadows, talking to. It is like, you just sit there and watch. It's like unbelievable.
There were thought of that.
Everybody practicing. Yeah, oh, yeah, they outstanding there. You know, the dramatic ones are really funny because they're like actually going right after that wall, you know? But it is, it's really something to see and so many involved. There is a lot of students involved.
Okay.
One other thing that I, I want to put out there too is you may have heard on the news that Arlington schools are going to afford a school year next year.
Yeah.
And there's a number of other schools throughout the state who are doing the same. And it's not a large number. And the question's been posed to me is if we've considered it. And I know Mr. Morrison, Ms. Winter and Mr. Haig, and just had brief discussions on it, you know? So I don't know where, where that'll go. And I'm sure if we do something like that, it probably won't be. So I don't know where, where that'll go and I'm sure if, if we do something like that, it probably won't be for next year. And maybe down the road.
Some of the other schools do first.
That was one of the discussions down at the, the January meeting, remember we sat, did you sit in on that one?
Yeah, I don't know if they were going to four day, they were just switching their hours, weren't they?
No, I think they were going to four days.
Oh.
And it was like, it's taken them a year to get it all worked out, so.
Yeah, yeah, down at the.
Yeah. I guess I would have to see the pros and cons of that, I think it'd be very difficult in where we live for people who have daycare and things like that to have to deal with the whole.
Especially like the shortage of daycare.
With the shortage we have up here in rural area, maybe in the city there's no way to deal with it, you got a lot more options, you know?
So, but it's, it's something that we may discuss then later, in later time. And I just, I just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah.
Uh, other than that, I don't have anything else.
I'm just, one thing, um, on this N D E corrective action plan. We've had this corrective action for twenty two years. We don't have enough people in the business office to do the handling and again, it is what it is.
It is what it is.
But you can do a lot.
And municipalities and smaller towns have the same thing.
Same corrective.
Yeah, yeah, separation, separation of duties, things like that. Yeah, with that said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, why not?
We have, we have done a few and I know, you know, last week there, I know one more is coming in, so. Lisa did the honor for me of running a spreadsheet. Of those students within our school district that go to other. Other facilities and those from other school districts that come in to us. And I think maybe at some point we could consider sending something out. To those who are not attending Chisholm schools, you know, showing the pros of Chisholm. Two new super, or two new uh principals, new superintendent, new school on the way. So, I'm. I'm hopeful and I'm thinking about something to put together. And if I do put something together, I'll certainly bring it to the board for consideration and uh, input.
Thinking of marketing stuff, maybe. I think that uh, our superintendent not, not the one I spoke to, one of the points was. That was one of her things that she really wanted to do was. Uh, go to, she says, I wanna go personally to every house that sends their child somewhere else, knock on their door. And knock on their door and ask them why, they send them there, just to find out why and you know, that, that was one of her things, but then COVID came.
We did that a long time ago when Derek Jack was here and the biggest reason that they left, teachers, they hated their teachers. Bullying, so you can go down the line, you know, and. And and surely they all have different.
Everybody's got something different.
And those in, that reside in other school districts that come over here probably.
Same thing, yeah, generally it's not education.
They need to just get rid of.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
So made.
So forth.
Motion by Director Lappi, support by Director Rama Satter. Any discussion? All those in favor, signal five by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, time is five thirty five.